Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to our District Two Candidate Forum. Thanks, Hup, for being here. I'd like to welcome Hup Hupman, one of our candidates. I'm, like Regina said, Sean McGill, a member of the Chamber's Government Affairs Committee, and it's my pleasure to welcome you guys all back live. We were talking about this earlier, and last year we did Zoom. The year before, this room had a couple of cameras, myself and a candidate, six feet apart. Now I get to see your smiling faces, and more importantly, our candidates get to see your smiling faces. As the Chamber's Candidate Forum, and this is for everybody, we're trying to do this a little bit different than other forums, where typically it's a question, each candidate gets a minute to answer, and then we move on to the next question. We're going to try to have a more free-flowing discussion with all of our forums. The topics for our discussion come from the five pillars of the Chamber's strategic initiatives. A couple of things about the Chamber. We have 800 members, and with that, that represents probably over 10,000 employees throughout the county. So there'll be folks that are, be watching this at home, or folks here in the audience. And just for everybody's knowledge, our five pillars are Innovation and Economic Development, Business Climate and Competitiveness, Civic and Governance Systems, Infrastructure and Growth Leadership, Quality of Life and Quality of Places. So for our audience members that are here live, we are going to take questions. Please write them down. Our Chamber staff, Haley, Alex, and Regina, will try to collect them, and I'll incorporate those into the conversation as appropriate. Hup has agreed afterwards that if your question isn't answered, he'll be available for one-on-one discussions as well. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. Well, Hup?
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning. Why don't you go ahead and take two minutes to kind of introduce yourself to our members, and we'll go from there.
Super, thanks, Sean. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. Thanks to the Chamber for having me. Many of you know me as Hup the musician or the entertainer. You may know that I'm a retired career military man, retired senior chief from the Navy, and you probably know that I was a member of the crew that rode across the Atlantic Ocean for a cause that this community really rallied around. There's more to the story, so this morning I appreciate the opportunity to present that. I want to tell you why I'm running for candidate for District Two and why I believe I'm the best qualified. Not to oversimplify it, but it's about service. I've spent most of my adult life in service. I believe in things bigger than myself, and then the success of the road campaign, this community made that successful. So I really feel like it's some payback for what the community did for us, and that's, I mean that from my heart. Nassau County is facing big challenges, big challenges in budgeting, big challenges in taxation, big challenges in services provided, big challenges in managing growth and development. And I believe I have the right leadership to help be part of the council that can then face those challenges. Good leaders make solid fact-based decisions, and good leaders do the right thing no matter how hard or how unpopular. And they don't need to take credit. I don't believe for a minute that combative or provocative slogans are going to fix problems in Nassau County. I think it's going to take people that are focused and managing problems. I'll take it one step further and say that those tactics probably cause more consternation. So solutions are found when both sides come together on an issue, meet at the table, and work to get that win-win. I won't bore you with a resume, but just a moment of experience. I spent four years in the federal government with the executive and legislative branches, working the program for the multimillion-dollar nuclear weapons program in Washington, DC. I spent three years forward deployed on an aircraft carrier, directing the multimillion-dollar HR services for 5,000 people. That's on the scale of a small city. I spent three years, excuse me, five years managing a local historic business downtown. And recently, my wife and Lulu and I have spent a couple of years building two small businesses and running them for ourselves. So we understand the challenges. Lastly, I've spent many years volunteering in this community with dozens of charities. I love this community. This all adds up to a pretty diverse toolbox of government and private sector experience, and I believe that's why I'm the best candidate, and I look forward to putting that experience to work for the citizens of Nassau County. So thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Hup. Okay. You just spoke a little bit ago about growth, and I'm going to get right into this, but before that, I'll give you a little warm-up discussion. You mentioned service in your introduction, and was there one event or one impetus that really said, "I need to step forward and run for county commission"?
Really, I think the overall response from the community, our original goal was just to train a few dogs. We asked the community to help us do that. That's about $100,000. But that's not, that's not good enough for this community. They actually ended up building an entire kennel that's going to train 150 dogs a year. So not only did they do what we had asked them to help us with, they went five times beyond, I mean, we're just under $1 million raised in that charity. That's 10 times what we asked for. So that really sparked me that I could go to work for the people that were willing to do that much.
All right. Great, great. Well, you referred to it in your opening statement, and both you and your opponent do on your websites, and we'll tag those towards the end, talk about development. And we're going to start on the positive here. Define as best you can, or in your own words, what good development is.
Well, I'd say good development starts with good planning. I mean, the process of working through the county and working through the state, and it's a large, lengthy, time-consuming process. And when everybody's working it together, everybody's focused on it, it should run pretty smoothly. All the checks and balances are built into the system, so you would hope that the process moves along. I think that we're, if you look at some of the projects out west there towards 95, we're kind of mired now in litigation, and I don't think that's the way anybody wanted that to go. So you got to kind of undo that, those chains that are holding that down and figure out how to move it together, move together with that project forward. They presented another one last night. I don't know if anybody watched the committee meeting last night. They presented another project, and then the vote is to move it forward to the state, and that vote got delayed for a couple of months, I think. So again, it's holding things up.
Okay. All right. Conversely, what's bad development?
Bad development is when it's not properly planned. When you, when you're piecing things together and you don't have a, the, let's say parks, I'll take an example, parks and recreation, schools, when you don't have those in place, you know, when you don't have the public spaces, when you don't have the infrastructure, and it's just pieced together, I think that's where it starts to break down. The future of planning, in my opinion, I'm not a developer or an expert, is that you plan it, you plan it through and so that you can present a package for the community and for the area.
So in your vision, I know we have the comp plan and everything else, what would you like to see more of in Nassau County? And that could be, you know, whether it's rooftops and housing developments, which is what I think we all think of.
You can't really put all the taxation on the rooftops. You got to have some kind of economic engine of commercial, you know, commercial interest and business interest in here, because as we know, they contribute, you know, larger to the base. So bringing those in, Crawford Diamond, I think, is a great example of where there's an opportunity out there, it's been a long time in the making, and the recent grant from the, from the state of Florida, combined with the federal grant, are finally going to get some utilities out there to put in a large manufacturing interest or a large economic engine out there for jobs.
You mentioned this on your website about private property rights.
Sure.
So within all of this, you know, how do we balance, because it does seem to come up, unfortunately not always, you know, in the litigious side as well, the property rights versus preserving environment and quality of life, which we're going to discuss a little bit more, and increasing our tax bases?
Yeah, I think that comes back to planning, as I originally mentioned. If you're going to work with the property, if, let's say the property owner wants to develop a property, and there's an interest in there about preserving, you know, the, a tree canopy or a certain segment of our trees, work with the developer and the community, you know, come together, come to the table, and plan it that way so that the preservation is built into the project.
Okay.
I think that's, that's really what I mean when I say a win-win, is that you certainly don't want to tell a property owner, "You must, you will, you shall," in the sense that they own the property and they have rights. But I think that if everyone works together, that we're trying to get that win-win where there's the balance. People, if people feel that they're working to make the preservation without being, you know, told or without being, you know, pounded on, and we know it's a policy or a practice of theirs to do, to work that preservation into the projects, everyone's going to work, feel better about that project.
Sounds good. All right. As we kind of switch into doing business in Nassau County, one-word answer real quick first, and then we'll expand. And since you mentioned that you've been involved in small businesses throughout, you know, in Nassau County, is it easy to do business in Nassau County? Yes or no?
Yes.
It is? Okay. Why do you think so?
Well, speaking from my own experience, I mean, the only roadblocks that we ran into were COVID because of our startup times. So, yeah, I believe it is easy to do business, but I think that the county has to work to keep that process smooth and quick and flowing.
Okay.
Not holding entrepreneurial efforts up and holding your business out.
So based on that, would you say that you think that we have a pretty good business climate in Nassau County, or you think there's some areas of improvement?
I think we do. There's certainly always areas where you can improve.
Okay.
And I think that the county staff has to be sensitive to the speed of which things get done, not holding up business that has to get rolling, not holding, holding back people that are trying to move forward out of this pandemic. And also, I think that we got to stop and take a tight look at the possibility of recession and things getting tougher here in the next 16, 18 months. We got to look forward and streamline things to protect businesses.
Gotcha. What, you know, and if that happens and things tighten up over, you know, the next year, year and a half, what are some things that you think that the county can do to help, we'll start with protecting our local businesses?
Yeah, I think that when you're looking at permitting process, let's just, a small area, permitting processes, to get it done quickly and not hold somebody up on a permitting process, you got to have staff in place, you got to have them, have them moving on the issues, especially when the, if the business has to come back to you a couple of times to find out what the status is, maybe, maybe we, you know, we're holding things up there. So we would hope, now, the staffs, the folks that I've talked to, they're working as hard as they can. So maybe we need to look at staffing issues, staffing issues as well. Do we have the right number of people in place to keep these processes streamlined for businesses?
Okay. Do you think whether for keeping our businesses that are in existence or bringing new businesses into the community, what are your thoughts on incentives?
Incentives, you're competing to bring businesses into your, into your community. So, and you're competing state, regional, or national. So incentives are important to bring those businesses in, whether it's a funding program or a partnership program or incentives, rebates or tax credits, they're all types of incentives that can be used. That said, you got to support infrastructure. So it shouldn't be a handout. It should be, it should be a win-win between the county and the business that you're bringing in, the taxpayer, right? There's a fiduciary responsibility, in my opinion, to make sure that those funds and incentives don't put it back on the citizen to attract business.
Okay. Thank you. And you brought it up, which is, to me, it's a type, you know, potentially of incentive. Are you in support of a local purchasing policy to, you know, I don't want to say favor businesses, because we don't want to hurt the taxpayers?
Yeah, I've seen this in other areas, Sean, and I think, you know, by local or by, by here, I'm seeing that's what you're referring to. And I think that's great if the quality and price are good for the taxpayer. Again, I think that comes back to the citizens come first. Those programs have to, have to be run in a way where, you know, you're not handing away people's, people's money.
Okay. Well, as long as we're talking about money, where do you think Nassau County is in terms of taxes? Are we at about the right, are we going to have to raise taxes to fund more people, or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, you know, I looked, look at the budget processes, that part's new to me. I don't have a great deal of experience in, I'm looking at the budget process. The, you know, my taxes, I'll speak as a taxpayer. I've watched my taxes go up quite a bit. I left the area for a couple of years, so, you know, no homestead, gone bang, bang, especially at the time that it happened, the 2014 and 2018, significant increases there. Last year, talking to the folks out in the county, it was the first time they used what's called the rollback rate, where they, you know, they took the rate and they adjusted it for CPI. And I think that's the first time in a long time where it resulted in, you know, not raising taxes. And then in budget discussions, they went and found, you know, some significant money to cut, but then I heard that there was a shift and they were looking to reallocate that money. That's kind of self-defeating. You know, we, the homesteaded property owners, I frankly don't know if I could afford to live in my house that I have right now. If I retired right now under the same circumstances and moved here and tried to buy my house, I couldn't afford to do it. And I think we got to be careful that we don't drive people out of their residences that are here, that are in that, you know, I'm a retired guy and I work my small business to, you know, to get through the day-to-day, but I really don't think that I could come back and qualify right now for my own home. So we got to, we got to hold that line. That shouldn't happen to anybody.
So a little bit of a hot seat question here. How do, how do we do that?
I think the rollback rate process that they're using now holds that line for the, for the property, for the homesteaded property owners that are here. It protects them. And then budget, there's got to be meaningful cuts in budgets. Things have to come off the back. Things have to, you can pick a percentage and say, "This year, let's go out and look for 10%," or what, you know, where the inflation is right now at 8.6%. Let's go out and look for a percentage where we can make a meaningful cut to the budget and get rid of programs that may be hanging on in there that don't need to be there. That's line by line. You know, go through line by line and find the items that can fall off the back so that you can properly fund the items that we know we need on the front end and keep moving forward. That's just, I think that's just the responsibility of staff, and that's with the right staff, and you got, you got to be able to do that.
In general, with Nassau County, how do you think we are from a regulatory environment? About right, too much, too little, you know, for our businesses?
I think it's a, it's a process. Every process you're running as a county for the folks has to be a continuing improvement process. So I would say that it works well. Everything can, can work better. That's, we should always be trying to constantly improve our processes.
I should give you 20 bucks right now because you just gave me right, led it right into the next question for you. Within, we'll say Nassau County government, you know, whether it's, it's staff or our elected officials, how do you think we're doing overall? And I'll be a little bit more specific. Give me, which you did a little bit in your opening statement. I always start with the good, so give me three things that you think we're doing really well, and then three things that you think we could do a little bit better on.
Sure. I think we're doing great on public safety. I feel like we live in a very safe community. I think we're doing, we're doing well in, in managing growth. I think we're up against something that's kind of unprecedented. I heard 3,000 people a day are moving to the state of Florida. I don't know how many we're catching at the first exit, but it seems like quite a bit. So I don't know that we were prepared for what happened post-COVID. So I think they're doing a great job of trying to manage that, but I think we're seeing some challenge there. And, and I think that, that we have vision. There's a plan that's in place. The planning is happening now, and they're looking out, and they're on it. And I think that's, that's something that really is going to bring some success for the county, county out here managing the future. Looking forward, having a strategic plan, sticking to the plan, and adjusting where you need to adjust, that's how you, I think that's a win for the, for the county.
Sounds good. All right. On the other side, what are some things we could do a little bit better on?
From what I'm hearing, brief conversations out there, staffing. We're having problems with the right number of people in place. That could be salary. Some folks are going south, some folks are going north because the pay are better. The pay's better, like, for example, fire EMS or things. So we got to be competitive if we want to keep folks here in the county. And I know there's, like, they're being proactive. There's a program out at the college where they're getting folks in there to get CDL licensing so we can get them back to the staff and have CDL drivers, you know, coming right back into, to work for the county. That's a shortage out there. So uniquely, I don't know that the county was ready for folks that were subsidized during the pandemic who haven't returned to the workforce yet. That's another problem, labor shortage.
Okay. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. You had mentioned several times about, you know, trying to create win-win solutions. So through, you know, the legislative process, whatever that might be, whether it's, it's a rezoning or just anything, how do we, do you think we do a good job allowing all affected parties' voice and a seat at the table, or can we do better?
I think we can do better. I don't, and I base this on watching recent events. I don't think that you should be in a position where the, a ton of folks have to come out and demand a look at an issue where they're pouring in, right? And so that's really what I meant when I said earlier, that if you, if you can bring both sides in and let them work an issue, you shouldn't have to spark that. Now, maybe you'll always spark that. Maybe you'll always hit on a thing where a specific group, large group of people, or, you know, specific people, we're unique here, too. A group of people on this side may be really passionate about that issue, and a group of folks on the other side of the county may not be really passionate about that issue and are really worried about the other side of the issue, like, how much would a lawsuit cost us?
Gotcha.
They're both in there.
So as County Commissioner Hupman, how do you hear all those voices? How would you reach out or have people come to you?
I think you, you talk to people. You, when you reach, when you're contacted by an interested, interested party, you sit down and you have a conversation, you listen to their concerns, all parties. And then you have to balance that in the, in what's codified in code and law, and then make your decisions from there. You, you have to, you have to do the right thing.
Okay. So any, any changes, you would think, to that public input process?
Yeah, I frankly am not a fan of the three-minute rule. Really, if you're, if you're coming to a commissioner meeting and you stand up and you get three minutes to have a discussion, that's really not the format that's going to solve that solution. So, you know, certainly boards or committees or other avenues to bring folks together before you get to the, the three-minute discussion is probably a better process.
In your words, what's good quality of life?
I think, you know, to have a safe, beautiful, vibrant community to live in, I think we're so unique here with downtown and the beaches and the, and the green spaces out west and, you know, to be able to afford your day-to-day life, certainly that's important to people. They want to be able to live within their own means. You want to economically be able to support all the way across the community. Quality of life has to be applied across that spectrum. Everyone to have, to be prosperous, we want everyone to have the best life that they can have. We want everyone to be part of the community. So that's really what you're, you want to have in any place where folks are together. I think we're unique that way here, too. There's such a great diverse mix of folks here. This is, I call it, sometimes I call it the island of misfit toys, but there's just such a great mix of people here that make Nassau a beautiful place.
A couple of challenges, you know, that I've heard about, and I think some of our members always talk about, is, is cost of living in terms of availability of housing.
I think that the, we'll call it affordable housing if you want to put a title on it, but you, you know, if you set aside an area, excuse me, and you can work with a private, private interest on the project like that, because obviously with the county, we don't build housing, we, we have to have other people build housing. If you team up with the, with the private sector on that, have them build a thing for entry-level housing, or, and then I think the thing about that program for fire EMS as an example, nursing, or people that are just starting their careers that want to be in a place and working, is that you have to be able to turn that over after they promote up and have a better salary and career and move them on. Somebody has to really run that program so that that is a cyclical process and that they don't go in, occupy, lock it up, and then you can't use it for other folks. So I think it's important. We, we have a problem with that, especially for our service industry. It's another example. Many folks that work here can't afford to live here, and they're up in, they're up in Georgia, they're down on the skirts of Jackson. We, we got to solve that problem here in Nassau County.
Okay.
We've got to partner to do that.
And part two, which might be a partnership, but if you don't mind expanding a little bit. So we'll take our service industry folks that are living somewhere else. How can we help facilitate getting them to their jobs?
Well, you could look at a couple avenues. You could, you could try a transit thing if they're concentrated somewhere. You could try to assist them with a transit, a transit program. But ideally, it would be much better for us to get them back in their own community. But, you know, we could transit them in, you could work on that. Transit is expensive. Transit has to be subsidized. So you would have to balance that program on how much are you willing to spend to bring those folks down to get to work.
Okay. And you've mentioned this several times, and, you know, I think that the cliche is "it takes a village," that a lot of times, you know, our nonprofit entities are, play a vital part of our community. I'll start with, do you agree with that statement?
Absolutely.
So do we need to increase their role? How do we increase their role? Or the, the services that are being provided by those entities, are we good where we're at?
Yeah, again, I would, I don't mean to sound like a cliche, but it's going to be about process improvement. If they're going to come to you and let you know that they need more attention, they need more assistance to make those programs effective, then we should be responsive to that.
Okay.
I find Amelia Island to be an incredibly generous place, incredibly generous. And I think a lot of our programs are getting great attention, especially from our own citizens.
Okay. Internally, a little bit of a hot, you know, button question for you. How would you, you know, through your own process, kind of pick winners and losers? And by that, I mean, you know, through the budgeting process, the nonprofits are going to come and say, "We need X level of funding from, you know, our partnership with the county." They're all going to tailor it to your heartstrings.
Sure, yeah.
We'd love to be able to fund all of them, but there's only so many dollars.
Certainly. I think that it would be partially a business decision. You have to look at where the, the dollars that you're investing in the program are giving you the best return for the money being spent. So you would, you know, look at success. You would balance that with, you don't have to give them the whole ask, but can you give them enough to keep them, you know, grow, positive growth for the program until maybe the budget situation changes within a 12-month period? So you could, you can keep them moving forward, but maybe not with the whole ask, with part of the ask.
Gotcha. Shifting a little bit, quality of life, I know if you ask my son, his internet access is the most important thing in the world. So, so within, we'll keep it specifically to Nassau County. What are your thoughts on our technology infrastructure?
Yeah, well, this is really a big private sector question, and I appreciate it. But they, they bring it in, they invest in the community to bring it in, and the government uses that. You could maybe have a program to expand it into, into communities where maybe they don't have access, have access to it. If you want to say underserved, you could expand it that way. Business-wise, it's kind of frustrating. I have one provider out here, and I have another provider over here, and we're constantly jugging, juggling high-dollar bills because of the different services that are offered. I don't know really the government role in that private sector answer, except to say that, you know, ask for the best product coming into your community, plan, try to plan for the future, don't have them bring in something that's already outdated. Keep driving the technology, ask them for the best, the best installation and the best service for the community. Let me hypothetical this a little bit, but if you had a technology come into Crawford Diamond, technology-based company, you could almost partner with that company to have, have it be a, something that could be driven in through the whole county. Just an idea, find, finds a technology, and then they're here and they're part of the community, and they're going to, you know, provide you some extra, that, you know, if you provide an incentive, they're going to provide you extra service.
Gotcha. Back to a little bit, some of our, our public-private partnerships and different agencies, what do you see as the future of the Nassau County Economic Development Board?
I think it's, I think it's vital. You want to have those experts. The government's good at things, but the government isn't always necessarily great at specific things. And I think that to put the right mix of people on a board like that to advise the county, it's, it's critical because the, the folks, and I'm not an economist, I could, I want to be a leader and work on programs, and having, having the board like that with people on it that are highly qualified to provide advice and consent or non-consent... on it that are highly qualified to provide advice of consent or non-consent, that's really important.
Okay. And, and like we, we mentioned at the outset, unfortunately, Commissioner Bell couldn't be here today. So I don't necessarily want you to put words in his mouth. This was the discussion, you know, that we want to have. But if you could, kind of, you know, briefly compare and contrast, you know, kind of where, where you are versus, you know, maybe what your opponents publicly stated in terms of your positions on topics we've discussed, workforce housing, public infrastructure, economic development, transportation, you know, kind of those hot-button issues. Where do you see your differences? I'll summarize it for you.
Well, I'm going to give props to my, to my opponent in that he's, he's had four years of experience in this, in this, and he's, and he understands issues better than I do at this, at this very moment. I'm working hard to figure that out and to be, to be better educated on it. I think, you know, the controversies that are out there, development controversies or economic controversies, the solutions are going to come when the, when the commission is focused and pushing to resolve problems and de-conflict. And I think that we're mired in conflict in some big issues, and that until we get free of those, until we get out from under those and move forward, it's going to continue to be a negative drag on the whole community. So I'd say, and I'm not up for the conflict, I'm up for the resolution, and we should figure out how to bring all parties to the table and move forward.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Hup. Why don't you take, take a second to have a drink if you need to, and, you know, take about a minute to kind of give us, give us the takeaway, we'll call it a closing statement, of what you want us to take out of this conversation?
Sure. I appreciate that this conversation was business-focused. As a small business owner, you know, we want to thrive like every small business wants, or medium business or large business, wants to thrive and be part of the community. I think that's really what keeps the cycle of quality of life moving here in Nassau County. We're part of your community. We're invested. We're residents and neighbors, and we want to flourish like everyone else. I think we need to be aware and cautious that tough economic times are coming. I'm not trying to sound alarmist, but I think that things are getting tougher. We, you know, the prices are up, inflation, product shortages. Think, this, these are signs. These are indicators, and that we're all going to have to work together, neighbor to neighbor, nonprofit to nonprofit, community to community, across our, our spectrum here, and take care of each other. So I want to be part of that process. I want to be part of, of looking forward, moving forward, and being prosperous here in Nassau County.
Well, thank you. And thank you for being part of our process and our first of many candidate forums.
My first ever. Thank you very much.
I hope it wasn't too painful.
It was fun.
For, if you wish to learn more about both our candidates, Commissioner Bell's website is votearonbell.com, and Hup's website is votehup.com, although he is having some server issues.
By the end of the day.
By the end of the day, it should be back up. Storm in Texas knocked it out. We've dealt with those kind of things before. I want to thank everybody coming here today. Remember that early voting starts from August 10th to August 20th, and then the primary election day is August 23rd. So get out there. You can also go to votenassafl, to our supervisor of elections website, to learn more about all of our candidates. And if you want to learn more about our District Four candidates this Thursday, same bat time, same bat channel, at 8:30, Thomas Ford, Allison McCullough, and George Spicer will be here for our discussion. Thanks so much, gang.